All right, good afternoon, everyone. It is approximately 1:20 and I want to officially call this meeting, call this meeting to order. I want to start off by first apologizing to everyone for being late. I want to respect everybody's time. And simply because I just came back from a vacation doesn't mean that everyone else should have to suffer and go all day, so I'm going to try to be correct, directly to the point. Today, I want to start off by reading to everyone our land acknowledgement. "I'm within Portland Public Schools today. We serve students and families representing more than 150 different tribal nations, including the descendants of the local nations of the Chinook, Kaflemet, Multnomah, Kalapuloyai, Clackamas, Cowlets, Malala, and Toowalatin. It is our obligation to teach accurate information, past and present, about the impact of colonization and genocide on all of our students and make visible the multitude of native families and many diverse ways native communities and families are living in the present. In addition to acknowledging the land and those that have been here since time began, we must also remember our stolen siblings from Africa whose labor built the vast wealth of this country. These two communities and the atrocities committed against them are intrinsically intertwined due to our existence within a white supremacist world. Everything we have is due to stolen land and stolen labor. And every system and situation that impacts our lives is built upon this legacy. It is our job to speak that truth into spaces so that we can all begin to heal." I want to give everybody just a moment, just to take that in and the impact of those words. They're more than just things that we're saying, but these need to be truths that we're intentionally living out and systems that we should be intentionally trying to disrupt and dismantle, so that they become more than just words, that these becomes an attribute to who we are as a people, and that's how the healing begins, so. All right, thank you. With that, I want to turn this agenda over so that we can get an update on our charter school application.
Thank you. Thank you Director Green.
We still have a really bad echo from those of you who are in the boardroom.
She's working on it. Sorry, just one second. Is that going to fix it? Then can they hear me on this? Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you. Okay, I will do this better. There we go. Okay. So before we get started, I'd also just like to welcome, we have a new we have a new member joining us today, and that is that our district council representative, Jackson, has assigned a student to this committee. And so I want to just introduce and invite Oscar Calvert to come up and introduce himself.
Hi.
Hi, Oscar.
How are you?
Great.
I'm, go to MLC, I'm a, see, I'm a sophomore. I use he they pronouns and I'm excited to work on charter and alternative.
Welcome to the team, Oscar.
Thank you.
I look forward to having a more direct dialogue with you in person versus me being on the screen. Again, I apologize that I wasn't able to get there today, but I know that we'll be talking.
All right, perfect.
All right. So with that, then we'll just continue with our agenda. As Director Green said, the first order of business is an, whoops, is an update on our charter school application. So I'm going to invite Tara O'Neil to come up.
Good afternoon, hi. I'm just going to let you give, I'm going to give a quick update about this. If you recall at the last meeting, we were expecting that we would be reviewing a new application. And, just a minute, I'm out of the screen, hold on here. There we go, hi, everybody. And since that time, the charter school applicant has withdrawn that application from consideration for this year. So they have chosen to wait. They'd like to create a more robust proposal and submit that to us in the next application cycle. That cycle will begin July 15th of 2022. So we'll be back here in eight to 10 months, looking at a new application, we hope.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions about the charter application?
I don't have any.
Okay, thanks Tara. All right, and then for the next order of business, I'm going to invite Erica Stavis to come up. And we just wanted to share briefly and give an update, provide an update related to the issue of attendance and students who were struggling, the issue that came up last month. So we've had a lot of progress on that and I just wanted Erica to give the update and share the progress.
Thank you, hi, everyone. So yes, just an update. Previously, Mr. McFerrin, I believe, had come on and discussed some of the issues that were arising at one of our specific CBO schools, Rosemary Anderson. Excuse me. And we have worked to resolve that issue and worked with our synergy team here and the staff at that CBO and our other CBOs to ensure that all of the CBOs have access to the appropriate codes to ensure that students who are making progress towards graduation are able to be marked as doing so.
And I'll just say that we utilized, so we're appreciative to our synergy team and to Dunya Manu and others in our attendance team who've worked with us to solve this issue. And what we've also done is we utilized attendance codes that were outlined by ODE and the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance that's provided by the state. So we're happy to share that we've come up with a solution for that one.
Fantastic. Fantastic.
All right, and then actually, you can, oh no, actually, it's Tara. And then, this is really fast, then we're already to the fun part of our agenda. So we're going to hear from two schools today. We're going to hear from a charter school that's going to share a bit about their school and then we're going to hear from a contracted alternative school that's going to, again, share a bit about their school. And then, one of the things that we're going to finalize offline is the visitation or the school visit schedule for contracted, for our alternative schools and for our charter schools. And so we will, so we're going to, in the future, we'll be able to have a mix of heading out to schools as well as having schools present during this time. All right, so with that, I'm going to step away and again, let Tara introduce the school.
Hi, again. So as you all are already aware, there are seven total charter schools in the portfolio that PPS works with. Five of them are sponsored by PPS and two of them are state-sponsored schools. I won't go through each school individually here, but in general, each school has its own focus. They range in student numbers from about 144 students clear up to about 430 students, so they're all different sizes. We have two K8 schools in the PPS-sponsored schools. The rest are K5. And both the state-sponsored schools are K8. Total charter school students is about 1,865 for PPS schools. And today, we are going to be able to put a spotlight on Portland Village School. The executive director is Dr. Jennifer Stackhouse and she's here to speak with you today. A little spotlight of their student demographics. As of October, there were 427 students. 19% historically underserved by race and ethnicity. 14% are economically disadvantaged by direct certification count. 3% emerging bilingual students and 17% students with disabilities. And with that, I'm going to invite Dr. Stackhouse, also known as Dr. J, and her team. And she has also brought a couple of students with her to present.
Now, I'm really mad that I'm not there. I'm really mad that I'm not there now because I'm missing the babies. This is terrible.
The bottom one? Okay, perfect. And the mics are hot? Okay. Excellent. Hello, Caroline and Anna, you want to come and sit? I don't know if we have another chair?
We can share this one.
Okay. Hello, thank you, directors. We are so appreciative of being able to be here today and to speak with you about our school, the Portland Village School. I have some wonderful student guests here from our eighth grade leadership. We are a K8 public Waldorf charter and so fortunate and appreciative of our work that we do within our community and our partnership with Portland Public Schools, which is so important for us. So, thank you so much for having us. A little bit about Portland Village School. We are a public Waldorf school and as members of the public Waldorf community, we approach education from a very holistic perspective, talking about supporting students to develop the head, hand, and heart in the work that they're doing in learning. So we recognize that learning is a full process that integrates the whole human being. We look at students academically, of course, but socialization is very important to us. Relationships are incredibly important to the work that we do. And really creating a community is fundamental to the way that we look at educating and the role of education within our school. So for example, unlike a traditional neighborhood public school, which is where my background was prior to coming here, we have a model where our students stay in essentially like classroom families. So they start at the first grade level. Kindergarten is kind of its own little space. And then, at the first grade level, they join into a classroom community with peers that they stay with all the way through their learning experience off to graduation sometimes. So these, yeah, it's really different. So these children also stay with their teacher. So you create a family in first grade and that community cohort moves together, first grade to second grade to third grade to fourth grade. Sometimes teachers choose to take their students all the way up to eighth grade. And so you really create a very different kind of dynamic when you get to know your students to that level. Your students get to know one another. You have these great relationships that you build with families over time. And that is super supportive for students that are neurodivergent. It's super supportive for students that, you know, need those relationships. We know how important that is for kids. And Portland Village School is uniquely designed to foster those kinds of deep relationships over time. We learn also through integrated units. So unlike a traditional classroom experience, you know, often, back when I was teaching in other districts and in other places, you had your math lesson here and your ELA lesson there and they might or might not connect. But at Portland Village School, our model is such that our students learn in connected and integrated learning blocks that takes math, science, social studies, world studies, language arts, into these thematic units that are clumped in six to eight week sessions. And so the students will really immerse themselves in this learning experience. And then, that is integrated and thematic, which is a different approach. We also have a deep connection to artistic expression and the importance of seeing people as whole human beings and that artistic expression and artistic endeavor is part of that wholeness of being a learner and a thinker and a leader. And so, in our school program, we have opportunities for students to be doing incredible art every day. That's part of how we learn. It's part of how they share their understanding. So our students have, and even through all the budget cuts that, you know, so many of us have dealt with over time, we have maintained a strong art program, a strong, our handwork program, which is like crocheting and knitting, we'll talk about that, and music, movement. All of these things have been maintained throughout our school community because that is intrinsically important to Waldorf education and we know it's intrinsically important to students. Let's see. Oh, I made it work, yay, magic. Okay, so, a couple of other things you'll notice about our classrooms when you get a chance to come through and visit our school, you will see that we have, you know, aesthetics are very important in a Waldorf school. The idea is that the classroom is supposed to be a beautiful and inviting environment where children and people want to be. So our classrooms are lovely. They kind of have this muted watercolor wash on the walls. It's really beautiful. We have a lot of natural baskets and natural light. We try to do a lot of things that are connected to nature and relate to seasons and kind of grounding ourselves in that learning. So our classroom spaces are intentionally uncluttered and intentionally filled with color and light that is connected to the learning that they're doing. We also have this value on interconnectivity, which I touched on and I said we were going to talk about it a little bit. So for example, at Portland Village School, we really think about how the processes of learning are supported in a variety of ways. So it's not just that I'm going to give you a stimulus and then expect a response, but that we're looking at what kinds of practices do we engage in that support the learner over time. So handwork, for example, we look at handwork, which is knitting, crocheting, felting, all of that. We think about that in terms of teaching students real skills that are applicable, that provide them like a foil, an opportunity to practice problem solving, planning, persevering. We recognize that all of that fine motor work that kids, I'm trying to find the camera. There it is. All the fine motor work that kids are doing when they're knitting is really support for writing. And all of that knitting work that they're doing also is supportive of counting, right, developing number sense. So we look at something like handwork that we start in kindergarten, really, where our children learn to finger weave. And look at that in terms of developing strengths and skills that are applicable to academic learning. Grit, right, our kids learn perseverance because it takes a while to learn to knit a sock. It's a skill, right? So they dig into these processes over time and that impacts their ability to be gritty with the learning that they're doing in school. So, another special thing about our school is a focus on festivals and seasonal events. These are really central to aspects of Waldorf education. In Waldorf schools all over the world, because this is an international movement, Waldorf schools, children participate in events and festivals. They are related and influenced by the communities that they are within. And we really do a lot of work to ensure that our festivals are culturally responsive. And the kinds of things that you will see are, many of these photos are from the pre-times, back when we weren't masked, but you'll see there's some images from our Rose Ceremony Festival where our eighth graders work and walk our first graders welcoming them into the community. And then, there's this also really touching moment at the end of eighth grade where our first graders send our eighth grade students off into the world to the next part of their learning journey. So, it's a pretty beautiful experience. We have Lantern Walk happening later today. So if you happen to be in North Portland at Gammons Park at around 5:30, you'll see some wonderful K1, 2, 3 students walking and singing. And Lantern Walk is an amazing experience because it is a connection between our recognition that the light is changing, you know, because of the change of the seasons. But it also highlights this metaphorical shift within that we, you know, as things get dark outside, we work to shine our light within our community, to shine our light through helping others to shine our light through our goodness and kindness to one another in acts of bravery, caring, and service.
You better watch it now, you're getting close to preaching.
Ah, no, well, you know, you got to come on down. It's a great school. And I'm going to turn it over to our amazing eighth grade representatives who can speak so much more eloquently than I can about their experience as students at PPS.
Herman's like, helping everybody to shine their light, that's my line.
I know, I'm like, watch out now, watch out.
Hi, I'm Caroline. I'm in eighth grade at Portland Village School. I've been here since first grade. So a lot of my, a few of my classmates I've known for eight years and I love having that sense of community where I've known these people for so long. I care about them so much, we're such good friends. And I feel like I really love developing that. Also, all of the different artwork, I feel like I've learned to be so much more creative and be myself and just be able to express what I want to and have that kind of creativity and critical thinking.
Hi, my name is Anna, I'm in eighth grade. I go to Portland Village School. And I've been here not very long, since the end of sixth grade. I really like this school because it teaches, like we've been saying, a lot of different kinds of expression and I think that's really valuable because you'll see some of these younger kids and they have this sort of like gentleness and, I don't know, kindness and expression that like is really special and unique to this school and I feel like you can't really get it anywhere else. And like, all of the different ways we can express ourselves is really unique because it's not based off of just kind of standard education. It's kind of like, you can do all sorts of different things with the material you're learning and it's really special and unique to this school.
That is awesome. I am so glad to hear the two of you testify. It's one thing to hear, you know, our administrators and our program leads, and I love them, they do an amazing work. But to be able to hear from you, the students, the ones who are the benefactors of the work, the labor and the service that they put in, that makes this all worthwhile. And I am extremely upset with myself that I'm not able to be there so that I could be in person with you, hearing your testimony. But I want you to know how grateful I am that the two of you came down to share what this school means to you. And thank you so much.
Thank you so much, directors, for your leadership within our community and for your volunteerism. We couldn't be here without you and I also want to reiterate my thanks to our amazing student leaders, Carolyn Saxon Rowe and Anna Kovalitsky for being here and for sharing with us their experience as students.
And what time was that meeting, the Lantern Walk today?
Oh, well, we've got, it's starting, I believe, at 5:30 we are gathering and I think there's a group walking at 6:00 and a group walking, I want to say, at 6:30.
And what park are you at?
Gammons Park.
Gammons Park.
And I was just going to ask, are there any questions? Does the board committee members have any questions for the students or for Dr. J?
I'm curious, Dr. J, to hear a little bit about how you make the community aware of your programming and what your efforts have been to diversify your student population and also, are you fully enrolled relative to your building capacity?
Yeah, those are great questions. So we have been doing a lot of work. We believe it is really important that our community reflects where we live. We also recognize that one of the benefits of charter schools, just in terms of how they are structured, is that they are not bound by, you know, neighborhood boundaries, right? So we are able, in some ways, to desegregate communities that are just de facto segregated because of economics. So it is an opportunity for there to be a real development of relationship between and across communities around the city of Portland, which is pretty special. We are a school that has been, one of the schools that kind of pushed back with the state around allowing a weighted lottery. So we are a school that does utilize a weighted lottery within our enrollment system. And we have found, in the years that we have done that, that our families of color or historically underrepresented, historically underrepresented families choose to enroll at PPS at a higher rate than their white counterparts do. So we are working as well to ensure that our staffing is representative of our student community and we are doing a lot of work around restorative practices, embedding that within our work. We are looking at and doing outreach to different communities, building relationships with different organizations. We have some relationships that we're building with some native Spanish-speaking outreach workers and communities doing partnership for, you know, like clothing drives and, you know, food delivery services, those kinds of things. And we are working quite hard to grow our enrollment to maximum capacity in a way that is supportive of, you know, community members that may have not had access to educational choice. So we are currently at 228. Our maximum enrollment is 444 and... Ah, thank you, yes, 428, not, we are at 428 students. Our maximum capacity is 444. And we know that one of the challenges that all charter schools have faced this year around COVID and families maybe not wanting to engage or feeling safe engaging with in-person instruction right now. We do believe firmly that those numbers will grow to be 444 once vaccine access is complete for children.
COVID blips aside, is your enrollment fairly equally spread across your grade bands?
Correct, yes, and we are very, we're full in many classes at 25 students and we have a healthy waiting list in many classes as well.
This is Director Lowry. Sorry, my camera is off, I am sick. So, I love PPS, as you know, Dr. J, and I just wanted, so people know, where are your availabilities? Do you know what grades they're in?
That's a little tricky right now. I would say, I don't think that we have any actual spaces that are going out. I think we're fairly full. And, you know, we do have, I believe, some enrollment space at second grade. We have a little room in second, if people were interested. And we have, I think, maybe a space in first. Sixth, well, no, sixth is tricky because of room capacity. So, yeah.
Okay, so if people were interested, they could contact you all and see if there was room on the waiting list.
Absolutely, and Krista Wheeler is our enrollment coordinator and she would happily help people through that process, for sure. We do have, I was asked to explain a little bit about a room capacity situation. So we do have, technically, there's some space in our sixth grades. But because, you know, of the real challenges around wanting to make sure that we have appropriate spacing and air quality in our classrooms, we have kind of capped some of our room spaces to be smaller as a result of wanting to make sure that we have that three feet to six feet of space around students and staff.
Thank you for doing that work to keep all of our students safe.
Do you have any other questions for our students here?
No, just thank them again for being here. And thank you for all the amazing work that you guys are doing to keep that school a thriving place for our students. So that they, they're excited about coming to school, because that's what this is all about. And thank you for being intentional around keeping some of the spaces smaller in the midst of everything that we've got going on at the same time. So you're finding ways to keep your pivot and keep the values of your school. And I appreciate and respect that, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, everyone, thank you. I'm here to talk a little bit about our Contracted Alternative Schools, or CBOs. Once again, as Tara mentioned, we have our list of our nine Contracted Alternative Schools listed in the slideshow here. And today, we are very fortunate to shine a light on Helen's View. And without further ado, I would like to introduce Dan and Suzanne. Well, that rhymes.
Well, thanks for having us, I'm not clear what I'm supposed to look at. Okay. All right, well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, come and talk to you about Helen's View. I think the big takeaway for us is that you're gonna come visit us, which we're really excited about. I know Amy's come to visit, and I actually don't remember why, but I do remember getting the chance to talk with you and stuff, so. But please try to schedule around our lunch, because our students make that. So that's a pretty neat opportunity to have.
Nice.
I'm Suzanne Kitchens, I'm the vice principal at Helen's View.
I'm Dan Constead, I'm the interim principal.
And yes, our names do rhyme, and it's a lot of fun when we have walkie-talkies at school. So at Helen's View School, we serve ages 12 to 21. We work with 11 different school districts, PBS is a big one that we work with. And our kids come to us with many different experiences, but the one that, the commonality is that public school or wherever they're coming from didn't work for them for some reason. And so we are there to help them navigate that. And we are completely based on relationships. And we actually have each staff member that has a case management load that they work with students and their families, so they have that person that they can connect with. We're about building a community and knowing what's going on all the time with our kids.
So it's pretty straightforward, you can see the demographics from PBS, the students that we serve. You know, I guess I should clarify, this is, feel free to interrupt, do you have any questions while we're going through this? I don't think it bothers either of us if it's interactive. So at our school, right now, we have about 123 students, I believe, enrolled. And so these are the students, the teachers that we have, the staff that we have on hand. So we have, all of our teachers are certified, you need a special education or CTE or both. Most of them have dual certifications, endorsements. We have two mental health counselors, instructional aides. It makes for a great deal of programming, a great deal of diversity in our program and stuff like that. So we can do a post-secondary pathway that would be college-oriented, or we can work on a career and technical education pathway.
And we also have two therapeutic classrooms. So we, this is what we do, credit recovery for our kids. A lot of times, students will come and they are very behind in their credits for graduation. And so what we are able to do is take each student, so this is all part of that relationship piece that I was talking about, look at their transcripts and help them make a plan on how to be successful to graduate. Because of the way our schedules work, we are able to make sure that kids can earn their credit faster. So usually, you would earn about six credits per year in a comprehensive high school. But our average is eight if kids are coming full-time. We also have online school that we offer, and we have a classroom that is, it works with kids more individually, kind of like a one-room schoolhouse, where we have one teacher that makes sure that kids get their individualized plans met. And then we also, more recorded classes happen in the morning for kids that are regular schedule, and then the afternoons are electives.
We have, as you guessed, this picture's a little older because-
Can I ask you guys a quick question before we move on? With those three-week rotations and credit recovery, does that mean that you're really able to meet each kid where they are in terms of their proficiency? So students aren't having to kind of like start over on a whole unit of study? Or are you able to like quickly get kids up to credit recovery? Or can you just tell me a little more?
Sure. So there's a couple of things we do to help students catch up. Sometimes there's a large discrepancy between credit recovery, like what the reasons are for. So in our schedule, we have two intervention classes built in that's focused on math and language arts. And so we have, the students are leveled in those classes. Because we oftentimes have students enroll with us that their reading levels are significantly behind and stuff like that. So, but just being below grade level isn't sufficient to dictate where a student would be. So it's figuring out what levels the students are at for reading and math, and then targeting that every day. We also have, as you're talking about, the integrated classes, which are team-taught by two teachers. And those classes focus on the social studies, the math, the science, the core classes and stuff like that. And as you said, they rotate through every three weeks, because philosophically, sometimes students at alternative programs don't have great attendance. And one of the biggest barriers in traditional schedules is if you miss a couple of days, you miss a week here or there, all of a sudden, you can't earn your credits for that quarter, for that semester, possibly for that year. So by rotating every three weeks, so that's a contained unit, a student can't be more than two weeks behind. They just wait for the next unit to start in that three-week rotation. I don't know if that clarified that.
Good for me.
So, yeah, so we have an early childhood program in our school, but we also have two, we have two childcare workers for the children of our children. And that clearly helps attendance significantly, right? When people can bring their children with them to school, they know that they can hear of, and they have access to their child throughout the whole day, right? So they can check in whenever they want, knowing that their child's getting their own learning opportunities as well.
It's also really nice to have the babies around. And we work with the Trio College Program, this is a picture, we call him Jeff, the college guy, and he gets around. And he's a superstar, so he helps our kids that are thinking of college in any sort of way with the entire process. So how does that work? How do I fill out an application? How does financial aid work, scholarships? What career am I looking at? Where should I go to school? What if I have a kid? What do I do? He helps them do all of that. And then at the same time, we also have a way for kids to be earning dual credit through PSU at the same time, through a program that Jeff brings. We actually have, how many kids doing that right now? Like five, six kids that are doing really, really well? So they will be working on that program, earning high school credit, and they will finish with 15 college credits at PSU.
And these are all kids that, who for one reason or another, couldn't make it in traditional high school.
So all of Helen's View students are disenfranchised from their school district?
Yes.
And I'm just pointing that out for the record, that these are kids that couldn't make it, couldn't, you know, find a way to fit in traditional, traditional high school. And yet, they come to your school and they're able to gain both high school credits and college credit, as well as some CTE stuff that I'm hearing about as well. So I think that's, you're doing a great work, but I'll let you keep talking.
It's actually interesting, this morning, actually, with Jeff, with the students, we're at the Soul Restoration Project with Daryl Grant, I don't know if you're familiar with that?
Yeah, I do.
Over on Killingsworth, so that was a pretty neat experience this morning for him. He was presenting to the students and stuff. So that's the kind of opportunities that Jeff can bring to our program, that Trio brings.
That's awesome.
So our culinary program, what we did a number of years ago is we got a revitalization grant from the state. And we were able to bring our kitchen up to industry standards, as well as our wood shop. Well, actually, it's called our makerspace, we don't call it a wood shop, we'll talk about that in a little bit. Wood shop just requires a higher level of fire suppression. So culinary, the culinary program, though, is run by our, Joe is our instructor. He's a certified math teacher, CTE for culinary, but he actually has an art degree in Ashland, but he taught math in Oakland for a number of years in the middle school. And then he'd worked in a number of kitchens in Portland, so he had the CTE experience. And those students, working with Urban Gleaners, brings us food every Tuesday. So it's all Whole Foods and stuff. So all our food is made by our students in our cafeteria. So all the lunches are produced from Whole Food every day with the students doing it. And during the shutdowns, and we weren't shut down that long, because we run so many special ed and CT programs, but when we were, he would produce cooking videos and we'd deliver food to the houses. And then the students would get as much food as there was people in their house, and they would make the food at home. And that way, we could serve a number of things, right? By getting food to the appropriate number of people in the house and stuff like that. And the students would learn to prepare with the stuff they have in their household. So it's been a really neat program. This class also do enrolls with a number of the community colleges. We're articulated with Mount Hood, but they don't have a very robust program, like, they don't have one. So they allowed us to go out and work with Lynn-Ben Community College and Lane Community College. So our students, we do a rotation, because we don't have a huge kitchen and we don't have a ton of space, right? It's, you can only fit so many students in a kitchen, particularly with COVID protocols. We rotate our curriculum, so one year, like this year, they're working on baking. So that'll be, I believe it's a seven-credit class, a year-long class with Lane Community College. And then next year, they'll go back to working with Lynn-Ben Community College, working on their sanitation and the introduction courses and stuff like that. And we just rotate back and forth with the different community colleges, based on programming that we think would be beneficial to our students. We also work with a number of restaurants like Zinbu and stuff in the community, where our students actually get to work in the restaurants. So we get them that vocational training. And frankly, it doesn't matter if you go to culinary school, or if you come from a program like ours, you start at the dishwasher. But we have students that have progressed through, and one of them right now is a sous chef at that restaurant and stuff. And we've got other students who are working their way through the systems in different jobs, placements.
I love it.
Yeah, and the food is fabulous. We had chicken tortilla soup yesterday, it was perfect for a cold day, it was great.
Do y'all have a menu set up on like what y'all are going to be making throughout the month?
No, because we don't know what we're gonna get. So one of the expectations-
Herman's trying to plan his visit.
That's exactly what I'm doing.
Not everybody likes the food we have, but that doesn't, because it always tastes like it's supposed to, but not everybody is used to, I mean, when they make naan or chickpeas, or there's just a wide variety of foods that they make. So it's always fascinating to watch the students as they get their exposure. Like when they have hot sauces, the students make all the hot sauces, they make kombucha. When they're doing fermentation units, right, it's kimchi, stuff like that. So it's, not everybody likes it, but the food does taste like it's supposed to.
I'm definitely planning, I'm definitely trying to plan my visit, she's definitely right. That's why I was asking about the menu.
So Health Sciences, it's a relatively new program for us. Our focus originally was to do CNAs, right? We wanted to produce CNA students, because we had a lot of students express interest in it. And then we found out that, wow, that's a, it's an introduction certificate into health field, it's not necessarily the best one, because most companies don't promote from within, right? They don't pull from their CNAs and stuff like that. So right now, we're trying to revisit, we have some partnerships with different programs throughout the city, for students to get their CNA, because they are better with the CNA certificate than not having one, as far as job skills and stuff. But we're trying, right now, we're looking at more medical examiners, or maybe going in a different direction, talking more about mental health and stuff like that in the program. So that's been interesting for us to try to figure out how to, as we found out more about the program, it's not putting kids, it's making sure in career, CT particularly, right, you want high wage, high demand. And while CNA is high demand, it is not high wage. So we have that capability right now, but we're looking at maybe going in a different direction.
There you go.
Our natural resources program, so this is our students canoeing in the Columbia Slough. It's a, this actually was two weeks ago. So as we talked about before, our rotations, so all, each group gets, we try the same experience for each group, so we did this three times to start the year, rain or shine, right? The commitment is, you're gonna go on the water, it's an opportunity to get outside. This program focuses on gardening, science, ecology, and it's taught by our science teacher, who has a CT endorsement. She's also endorsed in advanced physics, advanced, well, physics, there's no not advanced physics, right? Physics, chemistry, biology, so, and CTE as well. So it's, she, we're gonna talk about her a little bit later when we talk about the cycling program too, as far as the diversity of skills that we can offer for our students. Construction, as we talked about before, our makerspace that we have for our construction manufacturing program. This course is pretty neat, because we partnership, we partner with the Northwest Carpenters Union. And that clearly gets students into high wage, high demand jobs. And we've had a lot of opportunity to work with the carpenters union, they've come in a lot of times, we do a lot of tours there. We work their apprenticeship program. Jermaine, our instructor here, does a really good job of making sure that we use their curriculum that they produce. And we've had a fair amount of success with students going in a variety of trades. We actually find that more of our students go in entrepreneurial route. And we're, I'll probably talk about this a little bit at the end, why that is. But we also work with Northwest College of Construction. So we do have another way for people to pursue journeyman carpentry skills if they don't want to go the union route and they want to go, and they want to go the private sector. So just offering the two options.
Options, yeah, I love it, I love it.
Our cycling program, we partner with the Community Cycling Center, which is a great experience for us. They send us a mechanic in twice a week. The students learn to work on bicycles, but they integrate the science curriculum with it. So when they learn about friction, they're learning about brakes, right? When they learn about gears, they learn about gears. And we get all our bikes from TriMet, they give me all their lost and found bikes every Tuesday. So we just go pick it up. That's not as exciting as you think, it takes about 12 bikes to make a functioning bike, so it generates a lot of garbage. But it also, we get working bikes out of it and stuff.
That's fantastic, though.
It works really well for the students. The expectation of students is they fix three bikes up, they keep one for themselves and they donate two. So if they want to crank through bikes and own a couple through bikes, or give bikes to their family members, that's great, we're able to support that. And that fits well with this Community Cycling's mission, which is to get bicycles out there and get people on bikes. This picture shows one of the rides that the students in the class organized at the end of the year. Prior to COVID, we would also do a week-long mechanical intensive in their shop. And I don't know if you folks know much about the Cycling Center, but they're very impressive with their commitment to their values for diversity and for working, I mean, they have all sorts of great values, like you never take the tools from another person, you explain what you're doing, it's collaborative. And so it's really great for our students to be in these shops for a week, full-time, learning not only how to work on bikes in an industry-level shop, but just seeing cultural expectations for collaborative work, putting your tools away, keeping your space clean and stuff like that. And we've actually placed more people into union positions coming through the Cycling Center than we have through our trades programs, only because it's the diversity of skills that students are looking for and stuff like that.
That is awesome.
So our CTE marketing business program is pretty robust. The students, it's through our art program, we have an artist in residence there, Alejandro Sabayo. Some people, he's got some murals all around Portland, down in Fergie Park, for example, that's his mural down there and stuff. He's our art teacher. But we also have Craig Woods, who's our CTE certified business instructor. And they, we have a wide, I think we've got a graphic of it, of the different businesses we do. But like the shirt I'm wearing, the masks I'm wearing, our students all make that. The hoodies for all the administrators issue, the MESD our students make and stuff like that. I actually forgot to mention with the construction program, we use, we make pen and pencil sets, like custom-made pen and pencil sets, and we have a partnership with the police department, or the police bureau, I guess, where the non-commissioned officers get pen and pencil sets when they promote. And so it's been pretty neat to take students down to the police bureau and let them see all the jobs that aren't police officers, right? There's a whole bunch of city jobs- There's a whole bunch of city jobs that are available and stuff. And prior to COVID, we haven't done any of this since COVID for a variety of things and a variety of reasons. But, but that, that, that was an interesting partnership that we had. But as far as the screen printing and stuff goes, that's another business where the students can earn money piecemeal doing stuff by, by building different things when people ask for, you know, one-off t-shirts and stuff, the screen printing. And they really get an idea of how much work goes into doing something if it's manual for everything, right? Why things are automated now.
Yep. I love it.
There are CTE, so the CTE program is actually technically under broadcasting because that's what Mountain Hood offers. But our music studio productions, Phoenix, Phoenix Studios, we, we run two different classes in there. We use Ableton Live, that's dual-enrolled with PCC at their Cascade Campus. We, we work pretty closely with the music department there. We do one of the three series that they do for introduction classes for freshmen, if, if they're pursuing that associate's degree. But they also do a variety of just work within the studio. We oftentimes will assign the students to what would be fake contracts, but they, with an expectation of they're a real artist. So we're recording the amount of time they put together, the, the amount of time it takes to be in the studios. Just, just keeping track of that, right, is the business perspective. And if you look on Apple Music, YouTube, Spotify, you can find Helen's View's finished albums on there. The students do have them for sale, they're available to listen to and stuff like that as finished products.
Shut your mouth. What is it called?
Phoenix Studios, or if, if you use Helen's View, you'll find it, you'll find it on there.
On Apple Music?
Yes. Spotify, it's on most of the platforms. They've, they've done a pretty good job of releasing-
All the streaming platforms, that's what the artists like to say.
Yeah, that's, that's more comprehensive, I think, than what, but, but it's, prior to COVID, we used to do performances pretty regularly, quarterly and stuff, and the students, so we're, that, that's been a pretty robust program, actually. We, we find a lot of people really want to participate in that program. That, that draws students to Helen's View.
And y'all got quite a few out there, too.
Yeah, and there's a link to one of the mixtapes here that goes to YouTube, so you can listen to it.
Yeah, I, I've got that one on my, on my phone, well, I just pulled it up.
Great.
Yeah.
So I'm going to, I'm going to check it out.
Great. So-
That is awesome.
This is a graphic that our, one of our classes did, but it shows the different businesses that Helen's View students do work on, just as far as that entrepreneurial piece. One of our focuses entrepreneurialism for us, because, well, first off, it's, it's good for everybody to know how to balance and write to the basic principles of business and stuff like that. But also because of felonies and a variety of reasons, a lot of our students don't have the same capacity to enter the workforce. And so entrepreneurship, if they have skills, sometimes is a better route for them, if, if that's, if that's what they choose to pursue. So these different businesses give them the opportunity to work on those skills and integrate the products and stuff, that, that, not just the business skills, but the actual creation of product while, while they're doing that.
This is a, I love this graphic, too. And you said a student came up with this as well?
It was in collaboration with our, our teacher, yes. Yeah, it, it saved me a lot of speaking, actually, having this graphic available.
Yeah, yeah. I can see how it would.
It's really great. I mean, it's really great, everything that you're doing as well.
It's pretty exciting. We're, we're pretty proud of what our students are able to accomplish there. So-
Now, now can, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I guess I can wait till the end.
It's okay, I'm talking a lot. I'd be happy to have you talk a little bit.
I just was gonna ask about your, your programs or your special support and attention for kids who are coming out of incarceration or who've been adjudicated in some way. Don't you have a number of students that end up, end up coming to Helen's View?
We do. Barister Bridges, right, is one of the programs that MESD runs that works closely with Donald E. Long. And, and the MESD does run Donald E. Long. But I would say that they don't make a, we, we do have a number of students who have been incarcerated and, and we work pretty closely with Barister Bridges and with their probation office, parole officers. But Barister Bridges doesn't exclusively put students into Helen's View. They, I, I think they make a real effort to go with the neighborhood where the children are from, right? Keep them as close to possible to what's, what's most convenient for the student and stuff like that. But we do, we do a fair amount of work with students that have been incarcerated just by virtue of the population we work with.
And I just remember, it's been a few years now, but having a couple conversations with students that affected me pretty profoundly about just how they felt a, they felt a feeling of belonging and a real range of, of supports at Helen's View that helped them get back on track and start to really grow some dreams for what they wanted to do with their life.
I, I agree with that. I think that the, the model we use at Helen's View with the relationship-based serves us well for most populations, right? Most of the time people are incarcerated, it's because of environmental issue. It's not, it's not because they're a bad person. And so the opportunity to build the relationships, even through COVID, right? We divided all our staff, of all the adults in the school. We're given a caseload between one to nine students. And they stuck with those students all through the, all through the pandemic, right? So they built those relationships, they did the instructions, they meet with them two or three times a week. And, and I think it's really showed that all our staff members are really truly committed to what we do. Because coming back from the pandemic, we've had phenomenal attendance. We actually, based on how well it was, we, starting the second quarter, we had to add another cohort for the integrated class we were talking about because we have so many students attending and stuff like that. It's, it's been really interesting to have to grow during this situation.
This is Director Lowry and I had a question. Sorry, my camera's off. I'm sick today. You said you were the interim principal and I just am curious about your role at the school and what the long-term leadership plan is for Helen's View at this point.
Well, I have my opinions. You probably have to doctor, talk to Dr. Coakley at the MESD about some of that. But I, I guess I should clarify, I was the assistant principal for the last six years at Helen's View. And when the transition happened, it was pretty late in the summer. And so it did make sense to do it. So I was appointed as opposed to having applied for the job. So it did make sense to make that an interim so that, because it was an appointment.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. And, and just based on the presentation, I also have opinions, but do not think I'm qualified to give them, but, about your leadership. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
My, my personal history is my father was a juvenile justice probation officer. And I know that one of his deep sorrows was that the system often didn't offer, offer opportunities to, to kids to grow. It was more about punishment. And so I love that Helen's View sort of is, is giving all sorts of different students an opportunity to sort of find who they are and figure out their future in really positive ways. So, so thank you very much for the work you're doing.
Well, you're welcome. And, and on that note, actually, I wanted to thank the board here. And with the equity money that you've given us, our plans moving forward are actually to create a driver's ed program and to look at felony expungement. Those, those are the two focuses we have right now. Because it seems a little remiss for us to do CTE when, while it's a great idea and the training is spectacular, if the students can't get the jobs, right? Most of the trades will say they'll take you if you have a felony, but the reality is, is most of the jobs, prevailing wage jobs, we're going to the courthouse, we're going at the airport, won't let you work there if, if those things aren't addressed. So for us, one of the big focuses this year, and because we have the resources from Portland, from you guys specifically, is to be able to look at purchasing a car for driver's education, training, training instructors for that, and then looking into that felony expungement stuff. So I, I, I want to be very clear that that equity money is very needed and we, we have very strong feelings about how it should be used.
If that sums up y'all's presentation, y'all did one heck of a presentation. I'm gonna tell you that right now. Like, I, I loved everything about the school. I do know some things about the school simply because I know people that have gone through the program. And so, but to hear firsthand some of what you're doing, to hear how you're thinking about the students and how not just having the program is good for the school, but how having the program is good, gonna be good for the student in the long term. That, that's exciting for me because it's student-focused versus program-focused, right? I mean, it's like to have a CNA program, I'm like, that, that sounds good, but if it's not going to help the students in the long run, then, you know, is it really good? And to hear that you're thinking about that, considering that, whether you're able to pull it off or not, you know, time will tell. But the fact that that's one of the things that you're using as a, a decision factor to me is impressive. And so I just want to appreciate the work that you're doing. I want to encourage you to keep doing it and keep thinking bigger and keep figuring out how you can grow bigger, ask for more and see if you can get more. And keep going in that regard because the work that you're doing is, is necessary. You're allowing kids to, to really figure out what it is that they want to do, right? Beyond, beyond school. Because the education that they learn in the classroom is going to be good, but what they, what they're able to do with it beyond the textbook is what's going to make the difference in the society that we have moving forward. And when we give our kids something to do with their hands, it's another way to create a lane for themselves, then we take away something or an, an individual from the streets that are, are calling them. And I want to appreciate you guys for that because you're, you're giving kids who, the streets is a real option for them. It's a real option. You're giving them something else. You know, you're giving them hope. And so I'm, I'm so, so extremely grateful for that. So, yeah, keep, keep doing the work, keep asking. And again, I am gonna try to get out there, but I am gonna try to pick the day when I know that it's going to be a lunch that I can really enjoy because I am not gonna enjoy Kim Wai Lunch Day. I know that for sure.
We really appreciate our time. We look forward to meeting you guys. We'll get you some Helen's View masks, so next time you meet as a board, you can all be wearing your Helen's View masks and stuff.
We can make that happen.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for your money, too.
Thanks for all your leadership and love.
Love it.
Okay, and I just want to say thank you to both of our schools, to Portland Village School and to Helen's View. It's, it's fantastic. And I just want to put a plug in for the Helen's View smoothies as well. So I think we should have a smoothie at the beginning of the school visit and then we could end with lunch, or lunch and then end with a smoothie. But their smoothies are also great.
You gonna make it happen for us. I know you are.
Yep, we're on our way. So the only, the only item we have left is public comment.
And we do not have anybody signed up for public comment.
All right.
We have no one signed up for public comment?
No.
Okay, so if we have no one signed up for public comment, is there any new business that I'm supposed to offer to the table? Or can I, can I adjourn the meeting?
We are at the end of the meeting if there's no public comment.
Okay. With that being said, I want to officially take this moment to thank everyone for, for being here. I want to thank all of you that took the time to come out, made the drive to be out and to, to be a part of this. I want to thank our student rep for, for being here. And I again apologize for not being here. And just appreciate all of our, our schools that, that had comments today and all of you. Thank Amy and thank, thank Ailey for, for putting up, helping me put up with this nonsense and then helping me get through. And thank Karina for keeping me, keeping me on track. So with that being said, and if there's no new business, unless the other directors would like to have anything to say before I adjourn the meeting, I want to make sure that I give them a space.
Now, I just want to say, I look forward to our visits, but I just love when we're able to shine the light on the work that's being done in our alternative programs because I think they're kind of the unsung heroes of our, of our district. And just like we heard today in both cases, you know, they, they deal with students that for the most part aren't be, haven't been well-served or don't feel a sense of belonging in our larger comprehensive schools. And they, they give them a, a home where they can flourish in every way. So I'm just really proud to be associated with the work that, that everybody's doing for these kids.
Hundred percent agree. Director Lowry?
I have nothing to add other than my thanks for the work that these schools and our staff are doing.
Excellent. And our, our student rep, I see him behind you, but would he like to say anything before we, before we close out?
Just thank you for everyone and it's always lovely to hear about other, especially our community-based alternatives who I don't think often we get to hear enough of. So I always appreciate just the opportunity to.
Excellent. Thank you again. Go ahead, somebody says something? All right, again, thank you everyone and y'all have a great rest of the day. This meeting is now adjourned.